This is the October 11th meeting of the Shrewsbury Select Board. We'll begin this evening with the preliminaries. Could I have a motion to approve the payroll, bills, and warrants?
So moved. Second.
A motion is second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, so voted. And a motion to act on approving the minutes of the September 23rd and the September 27th meeting.
Move approval. Second.
Okay, we have a motion is second. Any further discussions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, so voted. Announcements. We have a few announcements this evening. The first one is, with our name change to Select Board, we also have a new email address. So now it's selectboard@shrewsburymas.gov, not selectman@shrewsburymas.gov. So you're able to reach out to the Board of Selectmen through that email address or through regular mail, obviously. Upon receipt of the emails, you'll get a confirmation email from the administrative staff. Due to open meeting law, the emails will be read into the record, a public meeting, before the Board can collaborate on a response back to the residents, which is what we've been doing traditionally anyway. So it's just a name change. The next one is, there's a medication take-back event on October 29th, and we'll be announcing this again at the next meeting because a lot of people have medications that they don't know how to dispose of. It'll be on the 29th at 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. The Central Mass Regional Public Health Alliance, in conjunction with the Shrewsbury Police Department, will hold this event for the safe disposal of any and all unwanted, unused, expired prescription, or over-the-counter medication. The next item is the diversity, equity, inclusion, and, I can't remember the other word.
Belonging.
Excuse me? Belonging. Vacancies, openings on the newly-created Board. We're looking for seven qualified individuals to fill seats on the newly-established Diversity, Equity, Inclusion, and Belonging Committee. The committee will be comprised of an intentionally diverse group of seven members appointed by the Select Board. Interested applicants must be residents of the town. You don't have to be a registered voter. You don't have to be a town meeting member. You are asked to submit a letter of interest and qualifications to the Office of the Select Board, 100 Maple Ave, Shrewsbury, Mass. Or email the Select Board at shrewsburymas.gov no later than October 18th at 4:30 p.m. And you can call the Office of the Town Manager at 508-841-8508 with any questions. And finally, we have a vacancy on the Paxton Cemetery Commission. The Town Manager is currently seeking one qualified individual to fill a vacant seat on that commission. Interested applicants must be registered voters of the town and are asked to submit a letter of interest and qualifications to Kevin Misakar, the Town Manager, at 100 Maple Ave, Shrewsbury, Mass. Or by email to A. Horgan, H-O-R-G-A-N, shrewsburyma.gov no later than October 18th at 4:30 p.m. And if you have any questions, you can call the Town Manager's office. Does anybody else have any other announcements this evening? Okay. Next order of business is Town Manager's report. Mr. Misakar?
I will just provide one update. Good evening, everyone. Just to inform the Board and residents, last week, we had the opportunity to participate in a regional tabletop exercise with the towns of Northborough, Westborough, and Southborough that was facilitated and put on by Massachusetts Emergency Management Agency, or MIMA. So it was the first time that we've had an opportunity to gather with multiple towns to plan for some type of emergency event. This tabletop exercise happened to be a hurricane of category-three strength that was going to impact central Massachusetts, just like Hurricane Bob did on a similar track. So we did a lot of pre-planning, preparation-type work, and then post-incident recovery. We had a number of town staff, public safety staff, DPW staff, general administrative staff from all communities there. There was probably about 40 to 50 of us in the room, and I just thought it was a worthwhile event. It's something that we often plan for as individual towns, but being with all those other towns provided new ideas and new opportunities for future collaboration. So it was a well-put-on event by MIMA, so that's it.
Okay, thank you. Next item of business would be public comment. No one submitted an application to speak, so we won't be having that this evening. The next order of business would be a 710 hearing, but we're a little bit ahead of that. So why don't we jump to item 10, which is to review an act to appoint one member of the Historic District Commission to fill a vacancy for a term set to expire June 30th, 2024. We have had that advertised for about a month. We have one applicant, Shannon Noly. Any discussion on this application or on the appointment?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Ms. Kessner.
I know that we just had the one letter of interest, but I do think that it is a qualified individual who is sincerely interested in this position, so I'm comfortable moving ahead, and I'd like to make a motion that we appoint Shannon Noly to the Historic District Commission to fill a vacancy for a term set to expire on June 30th, 2024.
Okay. Do we have a second?
We have a second.
Okay, we have a second. Is there any further discussion? If there is none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So voted. Are we close enough to 710? Yes?
7:07.
Okay. Okay, then we'll jump to number 11, to review an act to amend the Select Board meeting calendar for November 2022 and December 2022. Because of the holiday calendar, or the dates that the holidays fall on, the staff took a look at the meeting schedule and recommending that we change our meetings in November to November 1st and the 15th, and December to the 6th and the 20th. Everybody got a chance to look at that? Everybody okay with that? Okay, we need to vote on that, right?
Yep. Move approval. Second.
Okay. We have a motion is second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so voted.
7:08.
All right, we got one more. Next item is, we'll jump to number 12, I mean, not number 12, number 13, to review an act on the address change request from Ruth Anderson, our assessor, for a property located at 119 Spring Street, which is the Spring Street School pursuant to Select Board Policy 29. This is an administrative action. Spring Street School address has been used, the address that's been used is 123 since the school was opened. The address is actually 119, and then prep for the, what do they call that? The new addressing system they're going to use?
Primary address.
Yeah, the primary address table. This is one of the cleanup addresses, so she's requested that the address be changed to 123.
119.
Excuse me?
Changing it to 119.
Oh, I'm sorry. It's always been 123. We're changing it to 119. Correct.
Move approval.
I'm sorry?
I think we're changing it to 123.
No, it's been 123. We're changing it to 119.
It's always been used as 123. No.
Yeah, so we're changing it from 119 to 123.
Yeah, we, no. We're changing it to 123 because it was always, we always use it as 123, but the actual address is 119.
Got it.
So we're going to change it to the address that's being used, correct?
123.
Yeah.
Okay, sorry. I move approval.
Was that a trick, Ms. Kessner?
It's tricky.
Okay, so, it's the pleasure of the Board.
I move approval.
Okay. Have a second?
I will second that.
Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So voted. Okay. All right, close enough to 710. Okay. Next order of business is a public hearing with, I'm going to just do the letters, ZBRO S22 LLC, DBA Osaka, Tho John Hun, manager, 20 Boston Turnpike, for transfer of a Section 12 All Alcohol Pouring License and Common Victorious License from Three Nugent Worcester Inc., DBA Osaka, to ZBRO S22 LLC. Hours of operation, Sunday through Wednesday, 11:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m., and Thursday to Saturday, 11:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. Good evening. Would you like to come forward?
Hi, can you hear us?
Hi. Would you like to introduce yourselves, please?
Sure. Hong Tran, attorney for ZRO S22. Z is Sanders and Zach, her two sons, two brothers. Two Two is her. That's how you pronounce her, her name.
Okay.
And this is Two, herself.
Okay. So are you buying the business, just selling from one member of the family to the other?
Well, it's a, purchasing the business from the Three Nugents right now, the current owners, to Two, transferring to her, Two.
Okay.
Yep, and we're here with the application for a transfer of liquor license to the ZROs 22, yep.
Anything else that, is anything else going to change? Same operation, same hours?
The same operation, same hours, correct.
Okay. Anything else you'd like to tell us?
No. I mean, unless you want to know anything. Oh, I brought her out so you can ask. I mean, she's fully TIP certified.
Well, we'll see if the Board has any questions. Any questions from members of the Board? No? This is a public hearing. Is there anybody who'd like to be heard on this matter? No? Okay. Well, what is the pleasure of the Board?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Samia.
Just a quick question on the transaction, on the purchase itself. Is it straight-out sale, or is it a sale with a promissory note?
Straight-out sale. It's just $20,000 there.
Oh, okay. All right, that's easy enough. In the past, we've seen it where there's been a lien on all assets, including any liquor license. So that answers that question. Thank you.
Yeah, given the pandemic, they're just trying to get out of the business, and she has a good business plan to revive it.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else?
Move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second to close the public hearing. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So voted. Okay, the hearing is closed. What is the pleasure of the Board?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we, we're going to transfer the Section 12 All Alcohol Pouring License and Common Victorious License from Three Nugent Worcester Inc., DBA Osaka, to Z, ZRO S2, right?
ZROs, ZROs 22, yep.
ZROs 22 LLC. Hours of operation, Sunday through Wednesday, 11:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. Thursday through Saturday, 11:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m.
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion? Mr. Samia?
Just a quick question. In the materials, is there a requirement for a contingency at all for liquor liability insurance, or is that all covered? If I look at the, oh, okay. So is that part of the motion, or no? Okay, never mind. Thank you.
Okay. Okay. Any other questions? Comment? Okay. Then all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So voted.
Thank you.
Thank you.
This license application will go to Boston, and you'll hear when it's ready. Common Victorious will be ready tomorrow, right? This week?
Yeah, this week.
This week?
Yeah.
That'll be ready. The other one's got to go to Boston to get approved. Okay?
Perfect. Thank you so much.
Great, thank you. Good luck.
Good luck.
Okay. Next order of business is a public hearing with McGovern Auto Group Corp. Services, Inc., DBA McGovern Collision, 420 Boston Turnpike, for a garage license. Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Members of the Board, thank you for having us here tonight. For the record, my name is Richard Ricker. I'm attorney here, representing the applicant, and my law offices are at 11 Maple Ave in Shrewsbury. I'm here with Matt McGovern, who is to my right, who, as you know, and as you've seen him before, he's, in fact, I've seen him on TV, too. He sells a lot of autos. He's got quite a few dealerships. This proposal is part of the overall plan to services dealerships. Also with us is David McQuell from Kelly Engineering, who will explain the change in plans since the last time we were before you. As you recall, most of you recall, some of us weren't here. Congratulations.
Thank you.
We were here back in February, and it's been a long, been a long haul. We, at that time, you will recall that, that, this is, this is the way the property looked, or does look, somewhat, now.
Yes.
With respect to the upper right-hand corner of the property, you will recall that our plan at that stage, and you want to go to slide two?
Yes, go to the, to the next sheet.
You'll, you recall that our plan at that time left that area blank because we anticipated that we would get someone in there for future use of that portion of the property, together with the Collision Center that we were in front of you to discuss in February. We are lucky enough at this stage to have landed a Class A tenant. It's floor decor. They are considered a very good quality tenant, and Matt is pleased to have entered into an agreement with them. So with that in mind, obviously, the plan changes. Parking plans change, and because of that site plan change, and knowing that we had already been to the ZBA, we have to come back to all three. Your Board, the ZBA, and Planning Board. And the purpose of us coming back to do this is so that all of the plans that you view, that the ZBA views, that the Conservation Commission views, and that the Planning Board views are the same plans, so, so that there's no deviation between any of the boards. So with that in mind, David, if you could just explain, this is, if you want me to go through it again, I will. This is, this is all about the Collision Center for McGovern's dealerships. The garage license is to operate the Collision Center, which will also be the upfit center for municipal-type vehicles, which are the vehicles that you buy stripped and you put the lights on and sirens and things like that. So that's, that's what he needs the garage license for, is for that particular building, which is in the lower right-hand corner, the yellow building, as you're looking at it on this plan. Perhaps David could go through the changes in the plan since we were here last.
Sure. This was the color presentation board presented to the, to the Select Board, I think in the spring, which had a, just a gravel pad waiting for possible tenant. The next slide shows the breakdown of the parking that we presented in the spring. We just coded it out. We can just keep, keep moving because it's pretty, pretty simple. If we go to the next one, this is the new plan, where we added a little bit of green space in the retail parking lot. The retail building added truck and maneuvering aisles so they could get to the, to the retail, and we added a small parking lot as well. And the net result on the next sheet is that we have parking spaces on the currently filed plan. The dark blue spaces are required by zoning for the McGovern Auto Group Repair Shop.
Based on square footage.
Based on square footage. The cyan, or light-blue stalls, are the zoning-required stalls for the floor and decor retail store.
Again, based on square footage.
And the purple stalls are the excess stalls to get applied to the license to store vehicles. So in essence, the, what the Select Board is doing today is just updating the license to store up to 245 vehicles, as opposed to 333 on the last plan.
So if I could address that. As you, as you will recall, we asked for permission for the Audi and the BMW dealerships to, to store inventory at this site, in, at the same time as we have other things going on here. This plan, obviously, leaves us 245 spaces instead of 333 for storage and repair vehicles. So I'm not sure how you want to handle this, but what I, in my discussions with Mr. Misakar, I suggested that perhaps I would follow it up with a letter to the Board confirming whatever you choose in terms of what you allow us to have for those spaces. We're asking you to let us use those 245 spaces for inventory and/or repair vehicles. Of course, as you'll note on the plans themselves, all the repair vehicles will be stored to the rear of the lot, as far away from Route 9 as we can store them. That's, that is the plan. And, and so that, you know, this is not a junkyard. Let me just make sure you understand that. This is repair of vehicles that get dinged, scraped, and things like that, that he has to deal with all the time in his, in his dealerships, various dealerships. People dent vehicles occasionally, so. So we're asking for a reduction, actually, of that number from the 333. We're suggesting a reduction from the 333 to the 245, which I would, if you want, follow up with a confirmatory letter. David, anything else there?
I think that's, that's, that's it.
So this is the change to the plan as, as a result of basically landing a Class A tenant, floor decor.
Okay. So just to be clear, are you talking, these are scratch and dents, or this is me driving down the road and not paying attention to driving into another car?
Well, you could have a vehicle that, vehicles, you're not going to be, he's not going to be putting vehicles there that are totaled. He's not going to be putting vehicles there that, other than what he can fix for his dealerships, so.
Well, if you have.
Yeah. If Matt wants to speak to that.
We will certainly repair, you know, anything from a small dent to larger hits as well. We're absolutely repairable.
All right. The only reason I'm, I'm asking the question is, up in the back along Oak Street, you get, you get storage on Oak Street, right?
Mm-hmm. Yes.
And that's going to be storage for, depending on how we define it, either repair or, or storage for new vehicles?
Yes.
So that's going to be visible from the street?
We, as you will see from the last plan in this, in the slideshow, we do plan on adding screening there.
No, I was going to say was, from, from my perspective, I'd ask you to keep the collision vehicles down below and keep the other ones up above. That would be my preference.
That's fair. That, that's the way the operation would work anyways. If you have a vehicle that comes in that's disabled, you obviously want it close to the facility to be able to wheel into the facility. Cars in that Oak Street area would certainly be new cars, so they would be police cars that are awaiting, they're brand-new vehicles, awaiting to put lights on and whatnot. So that's the area where it would be most easiest, and it works for what you're requesting as well, to put new vehicles in that area.
Okay. Members of the Board have questions? No?
May I ask a clarifying question? So just to be clear, the primary change is the number of spaces, which you are reducing?
I would say the primary change is the addition of the floor decor footprint for the store.
Right.
And the addition of the parking spaces over on, on the Oak Street frontage.
Okay.
And there is a realignment of spaces in the overall parking lot, but the net result is less spaces for inventory and repair because of the required spaces for per zoning because of square footage of the buildings.
Okay.
I would note that Floor Decor has pointed out to us that they do, I think they said 60% commercial sales and about 30 to 40% of retail, so they don't expect to use the number of spaces. You may recall that there's, there's the ability with the Planning Board to actually park spaces and to not build them, which they encourage if you're not going to use those spaces. But we are, we're at, we're at the minimum amount required for that particular building, so.
Okay.
Did I answer your question?
You did. Thank you.
Anyone else? No?
I have one. Mr. Chairman, I have one question. You mentioned that there's vehicle storage there right now from Audi, and did you say BMW?
They're not there now. The vehicle storage there actually is for.
The municipal.
The municipal has actually been there right now.
Okay, because I know there's some vehicles there. That will continue even?
Yes, those are there waiting to get repaired. We never thought we'd be here a year, you know, nine months later, waiting for a demo permit to get the buildings down. We never thought that. So, so we frankly thought there'd be a building well underway by now at that location.
When you say they're waiting to be repaired, you're saying that, you mean, fit out?
Not fitted. Fitted, yeah. They're, they're vehicles that are not fitted up yet.
Okay.
But if there's no building, wouldn't they be there for a while?
So.
But they, they're kind of out of the way. They're in the corner.
All right.
When we commenced construction, we were going to have to remove them. Obviously, there'll be a lot of dirt and machines.
Right, you were going to be able to use them in a needed place to store them.
Right.
And the parking lot's going to need extensive renovations.
Especially that back section.
Well, yes. I mean, you know that, that whole place is a mess. It needs a total refit. This is a tremendous rebuild of this, of this site, so, yes.
Thank you.
There's no place that kids can learn how to, learn how to drive a standard anymore now, you know?
I don't know. They've been in Roy Park lately. I don't miss it.
Okay. Any other questions? No? It's a public hearing. Is there anybody who'd like to be heard on this? Okay. If there is none, what's the pleasure of the Board?
Move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion is second, close the public hearing. Any other comment? No? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so voted. Okay. Then we run to our next phase. The only thing I, I would ask, just for future, is if the Board votes to approve this, is to just put a stipulation that no cause for repair be stored along, in that Oak Street section of the, of the lot, continues down the road. Who knows? That would be my request, but I wouldn't be making the motion, so.
Okay.
And I think we're talking 245 vehicles, right?
Yes.
And you want to be able to store, just so we're clear, you want to be able to.
Give or take.
The hearing's not open, but I just want to make sure we get this right. To store new or repair vehicles?
Yes. We don't want to differentiate in that 245, because it'd be too hard to police, frankly, so.
Okay.
So, anybody wants to make a motion?
I make a motion to approve the garage license application for McGovern Auto Group Corporation Services, Inc., DBA McGovern Collision, 420 Boston Turnpike, with the contingency that vehicles parked along Oak Street be only new vehicles.
And for a total of?
And for a total of 245 vehicles total being stored or repaired.
Did you say they could be stored? Wait a minute.
Inventory, storage, or repair.
Inventory, storage, or repair.
Okay. Okay.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion is second. Any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So voted. Okay.
Thank you very much. I could just take one more second of your time. We, we just want you to note that Matt has, has invested over $10 million in this site at this stage. He's invested a lot in, in the town. He's, he's, he's working hard to get his approvals. I, I think he is asking for your support in, in any way that we can get it, because he needs to move forward. He's, he's been bogged down now for nine months.
Are you in conservation now?
Yeah, we just are finishing up conservation. We're going back to the Planning Board on November 3rd, and we have to go back to the ZBA for this plan on October 24th. So it's, it's been, it's been quite a schedule. We've already been in front of the planning board and will be going back.
Okay.
We, we've been, as Richard said, we've been working on this for, for about a year. And we've hired top-notch general contractors, engineers, to work through this. Obviously, the building is a bit of an eyesore, but also a hazard for fire department or everything. So, we acknowledged that when, when we first came in, maybe a year ago. And it's just been a long list of, you know, working with the DPW for water shut-offs and sewer shut-offs and electric shut-offs and demo permits and everything. We'd really appreciate your support for the next year, as we work through the various county agencies to gain, to garner as much support as we can to get through this project and, and work efficiently.
Well, you, you can't get a demo permit until you've got conservation sign off, right?
They just signed off.
Yes.
Oh, they did sign off. Now you can do that.
Yeah.
Yes.
It's waiting for the building department.
We can do the larger building, not the smaller building in the corner, which is fine. That's what we're trying to really get moving forward, so. We just appreciate your support as much as you can.
Sure. I think everybody signed off, is my understanding, except for the building department at this stage. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Good to see you all.
Okay. Next order of business is to review, yep, review and act on the recommendations, our recommendations for the October 17th town meeting. Is that correct?
Number eight.
What about number eight? Do we have to just postpone it, or do we have to do something with it? Are we just leaving it?
Oh. You know what? It's the same attorney, and I keep thinking, okay, no, we could, we'll take care of that. Okay, next-
I don't have to state that.
No, you're good.
I don't, I keep equating the attorney with the application.
Okay.
Okay, so the next order of business, public hearing with Jason Patrick, Patrick Modas, DBA, Patrick Modas, Marit, DBA, Patrick Modas, 247 Boston Turnpike for Garage and Class One License. I'm gonna open the hearing, and I'm gonna close the hearing, because this is an administrative, it's not gonna be held because there's administrative error on this, but we had the wrong address on it, and we can't hold the hearing. So, hearing is closed. We have no action. There is no action to take. It's not a valid hearing.
It'll be back on October 25th.
There's no action to be taken.
Right.
We can't vote to deny it because somebody could appeal it. So, it's not the right address, so we're not having a hearing. Okay. Thank you for saying that.
No problem.
Okay. Now, the next part of business is to review and act on recommendations for the special town meeting on October 17th. Mr. Mizikar, do you want us to take, take us through those articles?
Yes, I'd be happy to. So, there is 13 total articles, as you recall in signing the special town meeting warrant. Last week, on Thursday, there was a public hearing that was held by the Finance Committee, where they unanimously recommended the approval of all the articles, and I will walk you through each one of those here this evening. So, the first item for consideration on the warrant is adjustments to the animal control or dog bylaw within our general bylaws. This is slightly different than what was originally described after review by Town Council. We do not have to accept those various sections of the Massachusetts general laws, as they are available and there's no local adoption requirement. So, this is a little bit scoped down from your previous consideration. I'm happy to answer any questions. I don't know if you want me to go through each and every article like this.
Well, no, but what, so what, so what's the action here?
So, it would be to change the holding period from 10 days to seven days only.
Oh, that, that is, that's it?
That's, that is it, yep.
Okay. Right, I, I had it. Okay. So-
Are we gonna do these, just thinking about how we're gonna do this? Are we gonna vote to recommend one at a time? Or do you wanna have Mr. Mizikar go through the whole thing, and then we're gonna go back through?
I think we should just do it as it goes.
That's fine. I'll do it however you want.
Yeah. There's only a few of them.
Okay. So, I move to recommend Article 1.
Okay.
Second.
Second. You have motion to second, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Voted, so voted. Okay. What did you recommend? Article 2.
Article 2 is to adjust the maximum fine that can be issued for handicap parking violation from $100 to $300. That is the total scope. Within the description, board members, I would like to point out, it, the final sentence in the description is a little bit misleading, as the Board of Selectmen needs to determine the split between how much will remain in local receipts and how much would be maintained in a parking fund that will be overseen by the Commission on Disabilities. So, if this article is approved by town meeting, it will then come to the Board of Selectmen to establish the parking fund and determine the total amount of each fine that would be distributed into that account. So, again, the only change here is the amount of the fine.
I move we recommend Article 2.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Voted, so voted. Okay. What did you recommend? Article 3.
Article 3 inserts a new Section 6 into the Town of Shrewsbury tree bylaw instituting a $300 fine. There was an error in our previous passage of this general bylaw, which was rejected by the Attorney General, therefore, we need to insert this new section establishing the $300.
Correct.
I move we recommend Article 3.
Okay.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Voted? Article 4.
Article 4 makes adjustments to this current operating budget for fiscal year 23. The first two adjustments are additional funds being added to the budget that are available through taxation. The first is adding $75,000 to the Finance Committee Reserve Fund that's used for any unanticipated and unexpected requirements to come up, come up through the course of the fiscal year, which means we wouldn't have to call a special town meeting for those purposes. The second is $106,937.50 for the police station and public safety radio project to cover interests that will be due in May of 2023. And then finally, there's a series of transfers among various departments. Town meeting sets budget limitations at the personnel and expense bottom line aspects of our budgets, and we are not able to intermingle those funds throughout the course of the fiscal year. So, we're proposing $140,420.99 worth of transaction in various departments. That includes moving funds from personnel costs to expenses to cover outsourced contractual services for custodial services within public buildings. A series of moves to the Fleet Maintenance Division to establish and fund the maintenance, the foreman, working foreman's position within the Fleet Maintenance Division. Transferring the current salary that's funded through the IT Department into the Town Managers' Department, where the Business Systems Analyst actually operates from. And finally, a transfer to the salary and wage line item from expense line items within the library of $4,180.
I move we recommend Article 4.
Second.
Any other discussion? No? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Voted? Article 5.
Article 5 seeks to appropriate $47,810 into the General Stabilization Fund. This would increase the total balance up to $3,858,810, which is 2.79% of the municipal and school operating budgets. We have a policy target of 5%, so we're working towards that goal. And we're taking the opportunity to put a requisite amount of funds that have been identified since the annual town meeting in May into the stabilization fund, so we can build the balance.
Good. Comments?
I move we approve Article 5.
Second.
Okay. Motion to second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Voted? Voted to recommend Article 6?
Article 6 is to use $7,100 from taxation to fund enhanced physicals and body scans for all firefighters. This initiative would provide comprehensive scanning for existing health conditions and establish a baseline of health for individual firefighters, given the importance of early disease detection within that line of work. The $7,100 will complement a $25,400 earmark that was secured through the state budget process from Senator Moore and Representative Kane.
Comments?
I move we recommend Article 6.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Voted? Voted to recommend? Article, was that 6?
That was 6, yep.
Article 7?
Article 7 seeks the use of $20,000 in taxation to fund the replacement of a police cruiser. These funds will be used in partnership with insurance proceeds to replace a cruiser that was totaled in the spring of this year. The reason that insurance proceeds does not provide a sufficient amount to cover the cost of the replacement of the cruisers is two-pronged. One, we fund, or we ensure our police cruisers add an actual cash value rather than a total replacement cost, which keeps our premium down, since we only utilize the vehicles for roughly three years. And two, because this is a conventional internal combustion cruiser that needs to be replaced, and the new cruisers that we purchase are a little bit more expensive, but are hybrid engines. So, those two things combined require the additional funding consideration from town meeting.
Okay. Comments?
I move we recommend Article 7.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Voted? Voted to recommend? Article 9?
Article 8. Article 8-
Did I do that again?
It's okay.
All right, wait a minute. What article are we on?
Eight.
I thought we just voted, oh. I'm getting ahead of myself. I'm checking off the ones that are ahead of my, but I'm sorry.
Don't worry.
That's right. Article 8 seeks the use of $33,500 in taxation to fund a unified dispatching, staffing, and operations study. Currently, we dispatch through two separate locations. Police operations are dispatched through the Police Department, and fire operations are dispatched through the Fire Department. With the construction of a new police station, we're seeking to unify dispatching operations for economies and efficiencies. In order to do so, we are seeking the support of experts in this field to develop that staffing and operations study. In order to ensure, I think, the best model is set forth, we are asking for consideration of the development of a standalone emergency communications department to ensure adequate and equal oversight for both police and fire operations versus housing these employees within one of those departments itself.
Okay. Comments?
I'm just wondering, what would be the timeline on actually having this study completed?
We would look to have the study completed within the summer, or by the end of the summer of 2023, and implement unified dispatching operations that would be recommended for fiscal year 25, so July 1st, 2024. So, it would be available for, not this budget cycle, but the next budget cycle. We may be done well in advance of that, but that would be our outside limit.
Okay.
So, we're not gonna have combined dispatching with police and fire until then?
That's our plan, yeah. I mean, we never wanted to do it as soon as we moved into the station. We still have union negotiations with the Fire Department, so we have a couple steps to get through.
Okay. I thought we already, we have an agreement in principle with them, don't we?
We do.
Okay.
I move we recommend Article 8.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Article 9? Couldn't say that one. Go ahead.
Article 9 seeks additional dollars to complement a grant and existing funds that were put in place by town meeting in the spring to fund HVAC repairs and improvements at the Floral Street School.
Mr. Baldinger? I know you weren't expecting this, but could you just, once again, real quickly go over why there was a big jump? I know you explained it the last time, but is it equipment?
Keith Baldinger, Assistant Director of Public Works. So, the original intent for the original capital request was to replace what was there, or repair what exists now. So, this is 26, 25-year-old technology, uses gas, lost fuels, a lot of energy. In working with Selco and our design engineer, we went to a, you know, 2022 heat pump technology, uses much less energy, is fully electrified, no fossil fuels, heats and cools much more efficiently, easier to control. And with that, there is the removing of the old equipment, which is, requires some renovation and installing a new equipment, which is also, which is more expensive, much more expensive than what replacing it in kind would be. But for the future, this is the way that we would go. Like, this is only 15,000 square feet of the building. You know, if we were to do the rest of it, we wouldn't replace it in kind with what exists. You know, we would go with a newer heat pump style or electrified system, much more efficient for heating and cooling. So, that's why, quite the difference in cost.
Okay. Great. Thank you very much. Okay.
I move we recommend Article 9.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Voted? Recommended? Article 10.
Article 10 seeks the use of $100,000 in taxation to fund the primary address table system, as was explained in your primary, at your prior meeting. This system will improve internal operations and efficiencies and data management among a variety of departments, and establish a new system for addressing that takes into many factors, including public safety matters when assigning or renumbering any address within the community.
I move we approve Article 10.
Second.
Or recommend, sorry, we're recommending.
Okay. You have motion to second, all those in favor?
Aye.
So, voted. Article 11.
Article 11 seeks the use of $200,000 in taxation to fund the cemetery expansion design. This design work would take us the whole way from the conceptual plans that were put in place and funded by town meeting in 2020, to and through and including permitting for the construction work associated with an expansion project at 65 Prospect Street to provide enough space for approximately 50 years of burials. We are within a three-to, or five-year, approximate five-year window of space remaining at Mountain View Cemetery, and this work will nearly take that long to complete and allow us to be prepared before we run out of space at Mountain View. This will also provide ancillary enhancements, including parking and pedestrian items to the existing Prospect Park area.
Okay. Comments?
May I ask a question?
Yes.
I know you addressed this, Mr. Mizikar, at Finance Committee meeting recently, but can you just re-explain where we might look to fund-
Sure.
-the construction cost of this new cemetery?
So, just using the very preliminary figures that can be generated off of a concept plan, we think this project is in the $5 million neighborhood for construction. And as we work through this special town meeting warrant, we have used roughly $866,000 in funds that were raised through taxation on a lot of ones, on mostly all one-time purchases. So, the thought moving forward, as soon as the annual town meeting, would be that we may need to borrow for these funds, but we should have enough money within the current tax levy to consider funding the long-term debt service out of the existing tax levy and not have to exclude it, which means that we would be funding things within our current means and not raising taxes just for this project.
Thank you.
Okay. Other questions? Okay.
I move we recommend Article 11.
Second.
Motion to second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Voted? Voted to recommend? Article 12.
Article 12 seeks to acquire by gift a portion of 32 Old Colony Drive. This is a roughly three-and-a-half acre parcel that was identified by the current owner, as the Daniels family to provide to the town as gift to be kept for open space. Uh this is immediately adjacent to another three-and-a-half acre parcel of town land. Although it's mostly wetland, it is preserved uh as open space. Uh this parcel is accessible through a fifty-foot wide easement off of Sword Street. Um so it could be used for some types of open space slash passive recreation activities. Will at least have access to this land. Uh this piece of land is being segmented off um through a development um plan by the Daniels family to construct a few single-family homes. Um this land is actually um being dedicated to the town, which uh gifted to the town, which inherently would mean less homes would be built on areas that otherwise may be um developable. So I think it's a win-win. Uh we receive some open space, land, and less denser development.
I move we recommend Article twelve.
Second.
Okay, motion is second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Voted, so voted. Um Article thirteen, are we going to have an executive session this evening?
We are, yep.
So should we hold this one?
Um I think, if I could explain it, we may want to hold it, but I um don't think it's an absolute necessary to have executive session before we discuss it.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
Yep, sure.
So Article thirteen is, seeks to acquire a roughly fifty-two hundred square-foot uh piece of vacant land, which is a zone lot, uh which was recently created um along Chase Terrace, formerly a part of twelve Chase Terrace. Uh this property went on the market uh the first week in October and the town sought to acquire it. The lot was on the open market. The seller, um despite us expressing our interest to them, um took an offer and has closed on the property, so there's a new owner. However, um this is a critical parcel in being able to provide for additional parking and pedestrian uh access features within the town center. Uh it's complimentary to and adjacent to the redevelopment plans for one through seven Maple Avenue. Um and um it is the town's intention to work with the new owner uh who recently acquired the parcel for a hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars to acquire it from them, making them whole or conducting a market rate transaction with them that's reasonable and justifiable under the state general laws. Um if that isn't, uh doesn't come to fruition, the proposed motion would also allow the town to take the property by eminent domain. Um I feel that uh that's kind of a belts and suspenders approach in order for us to have the ability to take the parcel through eminent domain, but we would seek to make a reasonable offer, given the recent transaction price of the parcel. Uh so um it does have the provision of eminent domain, which would require a two-thirds vote, but the town's primary position would not be to not utilize it, or at least that would be my recommendation. So uh we're seeking the use of two hundred thousand dollars um to fund the acquisition of this parcel or to cover the costs associated with an eminent domain taking for it.
Okay, questions?
I think just to be uh clear, Mr. Muzikar, this is, we haven't made a decision on, you know, taking action if it came to that regarding an eminent domain taking. This is really getting authorization from town meeting to enable us to do that, but that would be a subsequent vote on our part.
Yeah, and in order for a piece of land to be taken, the board has to vote on and sign an order of taking, so there would be a step subsequent to town meeting.
Okay, and we did this when um, when we took land on Holden Street of the high school, we asked for authorization to take the land by eminent domain, but um in the end, we negotiated all of those. We didn't have to use eminent domain. So, um that, I think, as you said, last resort, but it's good, you need to have it in your pocket if you think it's important, but hopefully you wouldn't have to.
So we're okay to go forward with this?
Any other comments?
I guess, you are okay.
If we're okay to vote on it, yes.
Okay, I move we recommend Article thirteen.
Second.
Okay, the motion is second, um all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Voted. Okay, and that is it, correct?
Except for the warrant.
Thank you. Okay, next order of business is to, let's see, I checked one of these off, I must say, so it's um, we're on item twelve, right, because I jumped over a couple.
Yes.
Is to review an act to offer comments on the environmental notification form for the proposed GFI development uh property located at one sixty Holden and two seventy-four through three seventy-eight Holden Street. Um there's, obviously, is an ENF filed on um what looks to be um a major development or redevelopment of the um, what we call it, Worcester Sand property. And um we have the opportunity to offer comment along with the town staff and anybody else who would comment on it for that matter. Um unfortunately, the deadline is tomorrow, Ms. Laszlo?
It is Thursday.
Oh, it's Thursday?
Yes.
An extra day. Um anyways, um so um we can choose to um comment or um not comment. Uh my recommendation is that we make, that we do submit a comment. Um because of the tight schedule and because of last week, um you know, me being a bit distracted, I was kind of late putting a draft together. I put a draft together only to start discussion for us. Um and we can work off it, not work off it, we can start from scratch, but um I, we do have it in front of us and um you know, Ms. Laszlo, Mr. Muzikar wants to help start the discussion off, but um I, be- before we do that, what, my thought was um to frame it with some general comments about the project, talk about what's important to us, um which I think historically has been, obviously, we want to see the site developed, but um historically, the town's major priority was protecting the water supply, no matter what happened there, that, I can't remember that never being um a major priority on that site. Um so um this is very early, I think, in the permitting process. Uh I don't think it's time to get into a lot of detail. Um I actually started going on that road and realized I was getting too much into the weeds and backed off. Um but that, that was what, that's how this came to be at this point, but certainly, it's not the only letter, only way we could write the letter, so um I don't know if Mr. Muzikar, Ms. Laszlo wants to offer any comments or would members want to offer any comments if you had a chance to read this yet. I did try to send it out mid-afternoon, but.
I can certainly start and just follow up from where I left off at your last board meeting. I had presented a memo um that just described what an environmental notification form is, an ENF for short, um what the MEPA Office is, the Massachusetts Environmental Policy Act Office, and what they do um and in general, the project that is being proposed at one sixty Holden Street and two seventy-four to three eighty six, excuse me, three seventy-eight Holden Street, um which is uh the former Worcester Sand and Gravel site, now Worcester Sand and Stone, and another pro- uh property that the uh former Trotto family owned and now GFI owns and controls both properties. Um the project proponent has filed with the MEPA Office for an environmental notification form review uh for two properties, as I noted before, uh and two separate building proposals, one on each of those properties. Uh again, this is a very preliminary stage where um they do show all of the existing conditions, so the topography and the wetlands, um the existing roadway structures and the existing utilities on site and the proposed buildings and proposed parking spaces and stormwater design is shown in more of a conceptual manner. It has not been fully designed, um so this is the first step. And at your last meeting, uh you had asked for um some additional comments from what our town staff had reviewed related to the project and any comments that we had uh writ before you all had a chance to weigh in on that. So we did hold that meeting several days after your board meeting, um and I'll just direct you to a memorandum that our staff prepared dated October fifth, that's in your Google Drive. Um again, it just gives the overview at the beginning, and then on the second page, we go into the town staff comments. And I won't um read word for word, but I'll just give you the general lit- gist of this, that the town has had a cooperative relationship with the developer, GFI partners, since two thousand nineteen. Um we have worked with them over the years for several rezoning efforts on this property that the town meeting authorized. Um that this project um meets the objectives and goals of the Shrewsbury Master Plan related to industrial zoning and that a major aspect is to protect our aquifer protection area and our well area. Um we also note that the town, and I know the, the board, supported a MassWorks grant to extend the sewer and water in this area. We're still waiting to hear back on that MassWorks grant. Um and if we do not successfully obtain that grant, it's noted that the um owner would be responsible for extending the sewer for the project, not the town of Shrewsbury. And then it notes that the Department of Public Works in Shrewsbury is also working with the city of Worcester to update our intermunicipal agreement to accept any sewer flows in this area. Uh we talk further about um the easement necessary related to our wellhead protection areas and additional easements related to utilities along Clinton Street and Sewell Street for water and sewer mains. We also talk about recommended areas for traffic studies and traffic reviews and potential improvements. Um it will be noted that the developer will be submitting a full-fledged traffic impact analysis at the um draft environmental impact report stage, which is the next stage of the MEPA review. So we will have uh time to review that in the coming months, once that's prepared. Um and we also discuss um potential realignment at the Holden Street and Sewell Street intersection, where we believe that a portion of the Worcester Sand and Stone site is actually within the town's right-of-way, so we'd be looking to partner with them on that. Um we also recognize that um we'd like to partner with Selco and the developer related to any electrical efficiency that this, these buildings could um be afforded and that um there is also gas in the area, but we would, we would look to Selco about their um electrification requirements and needs and charging stations as necessary. Um the planning board reviewed these um comments and they will be incorporating their comments into the town staff letter. Uh and the um town engineer, Andy Truman, was working with each conservation commission member individually on comments as the comments on this phase are due uh before their next meeting, but they can also comment at the DEIR phase. So that's just a general update and overview, but I'm happy to answer any other specific questions that you might have. Again, this is very preliminary and more details will be coming out as this project is designed and flushed out through the process.
Thank you. I think um, we talked this afternoon, I think the board should have a letter of its own as the board is select, as the select board, sorry, I'm pretty good, it's first slip tonight. Um yet, as the board and as the water commissioners, I think we should um submit our own letter, but um whatever we decide is fine.
Mr. Chairman, I know that you, you've drafted a, a letter for our, our consideration.
It was only to start the discussion.
Right, which is appreciated, thank you. Is there anything in your draft that hasn't already been addressed through the town staff comments or requests? Or does our letter really just reinforce what town staff is, is saying?
I think for the most part, it, it reinforces it. I think it um, it also um, I think it reaffirms what we've been saying over the past gazillion years, that we're most interested in protecting the water supply um and that we support the project and, and um, you know, getting that site developed. But I, I think it's just a strong focus that the board um and that the town wants that water supply protected. So, but no, at this stage of the game, I don't think it would be much more than that, to be honest with you.
There's more on traffic, you have more.
A little bit on traffic.
Other areas.
Just calling out a couple of things. Um I didn't, I didn't think we should be doing our own report. I was going on that road and I thought it was a little bit of an overreach, but.
Mr. Chairman, if I have, may I ask Mr. Laszlo a question? So is the point of this letter, is it pointing out prospective concerns, issues, advocacy, all the above, looking at the staff letter? I mean, there's a lot in here about history and really incorporating elements of the master plan from twenty sixteen, bringing that forward, working together. But because it's so preliminary, did we also put a comment reserving our right to future comments or that's implied with the whole process?
Uh we can certainly add that we're interested in commenting further in the DEIR phase. Um I think it's implied that we would do that because we would automatically be getting that document, but we can certainly do that. I think to answer your first question, it's all of the above. We're advocating that we have seen this project through various stages. Um we are questioning or, or being concerned about some of the matters and that we are showing our partnership, that we have been a partner with this developer and they have been responsive to our requests so far.
Okay, so that may be how we differentiate ourselves too, and more of the collaborative, cooperative type idea that's reflected in here. And just one other question, if I may, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Just, in, I know it's, this is preliminary, but there are some mitigation, uh already, concepts already built in here in terms of what they do with wastewater and all of that, and they set forth, seems to be best practices to deal with that. But who will evaluate that for us? When does that happen? I know it's preliminary, but just conceptually, how do we do that? Do we hire our own engineers? Do we have that ability to? Does the Commonwealth come in or the regulatory agencies? How does that play out as time goes forward?
Sure, so it's uh, it's several-fold. So at the next stage, when there's more detailed documents about the project, that the stormwater system might be flushed out a little bit better, the traffic um flows are discussed and the impacts are understood and the mitigation is proposed, we can comment at that time. I think the, the meat of our comments will come at the planning board and conservation phase, where there are fully designed plans. We review them internally and we'll certainly be sending those out for peer review as well. Um and I think that's where the majority of the back and forth will go, if we need to get there. Um GFI has come to the table many times in pre-submission meetings where we identify our comments and concerns, and they have addressed those in those fashions, but um there will be several stages that we can comment, provide, and request for more feedback.
And we'll react based on the facts and circumst- it's hard to do in the abstract, so we'll, based on the facts and circumstances as it develops. Okay, thank you.
Correct.
Anyone? Yes, Ms. Catherine?
So there's um a section in the, the staff letter that basically says the applicant should coordinate with Worcester on any improvements that may be needed at the intersection of Clinton Street and northeast cutoff Plantation Street. Can you explain, like, what that actually means? Like, what level of coordination and would we be expecting that Worcester is also responding to this ENF and may say the same thing only about the town of Shrewsbury? So what would that look like?
Yeah, so um these intersections are within the city of Worcester and they're city of Worcester controlled intersections, they're not MassDOT-controlled intersections. So uh similar to what the town of Shrewsbury has done for other projects that are over the border, they have the same ability to review the ENF and review the DEIR and our per- and the permits that come to the local level as well. Um we have an open relationship with the city of Worcester that we'd also express our concerns for their intersections and their uh traffic movements and point that they should provide feedback at that time as well. Thank you.
Boylston, West Boylston, they probably are gonna comment on that also, right?
They may, yes.
When that, with that, DEIR is much more detailed.
That is correct.
And, and I would think on, on water, I, I would think that the town, maybe, maybe not the board itself, towns is, I would, I would imagine the town is gonna be heavily involved in commenting on that before we get to the planning board. I mean, at that point, it's too late. Well, it may not be too late, but I mean, the time is really in that DEIR.
Correct.
Because once that, they pass that stage, it's really gonna be difficult to impact it. Um when you get into, in the planning board, a lot of it isn't gonna be a lot of site plan, well, a lot of what we traditionally see.
Mm-hmm.
The DEIR is a lot more encompassing than that because it's so, such a big prob- project, right?
Correct.
Anyways, um, any, anybody have any ideas about the letter? What, what you'd like to see in it, not like to see in it? Would you write, write it over? I mean, there's no pride of authorship here.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Um I was um thinking in the, on the backside of the letter where you talk about traffic, um potentially, you know, separating out the intersection of the entrance to Shrewsbury High School and Holden Street as a separate, like, item of concern from the North Quinsig, West Main Street, Holden Street intersection, because they are, just to, to sort of identify the entrance of the high school as a priority separate from the bigger intersection, um just due to the volume of cars at arrival and dismissal time and, you know, a large volume.
Can you talk about the actual entrance?
So the intersection, where the entrance of Shrewsbury High School at the bottom of the hill, where it meets Holden Street. It's a four-way intersection. And, you know, just identifying it in this bulleted list separately from the intersection of North Quinsig and West Main Street and Holden Street.
You mean add it?
Yes, because you do mention in that first bullet, you mentioned Holden Street is the entrance to our high school. And so separating out the high school entrance, just due to the, you know, the volume of inexperienced drivers and.
Yeah, I, yes, we could, that's a good idea. I was thinking, because Holden, yes. When I was thinking Holden Street, I was thinking when people are coming into Holden Street in the morning, when they're driving into the school, that backs up on West Main Street.
Yes.
That's what I was thinking, but yes, yeah, we can add that. If everybody wants that, we can add it. Good idea. Because there might be other traffic on Holden Street that's going to impact that driveway.
Yeah, I mean, I, you know, just my experience going to and from the high school, there's a lot of large vehicles that come down Holden Street and meet the high school traffic at that four-way intersection. And both of those sides do have stop signs. But sometimes, you know, there's, you know, there's a large number of young drivers and some, you know, just inexperience. And there's, there's been some, like, you know, nothing. I've never seen anything happen there, but there's been a few times where it's like, woo, like, just a little frightening, you know, people, people a little excited for their turn. So just identifying that out, like, separating that out from that first bullet as being a separate concern.
I agree with the topics that you've called out in terms of, you know, the water and the, and the traffic. I don't, at first glance, have any concerns. Can we, or do we have the opportunity to just vote to authorize you to write a letter versus approving the letter as is this evening?
Sure, but it's going to be by Thursday, right? And we could, I mean, if you have ideas, we can work them into, we can work them into the letter and work with Ms. Mizikah and Ms. Lass, and then just float it out before you.
Yeah, I was thinking it would be a great idea if we just had, I understand it's due Thursday. Yeah, an opportunity to look at it, give you any edits or suggestions, if applicable.
Sure.
And, but authorize you to, to execute a letter by the deadline.
Yeah. I, my original plan was to have it last week, but.
Well, I appreciate you taking the effort. You did more than, than I did, so thank you.
Other ideas, Samia?
Fine with that, and you've got the major issues covered. There's, I think we just need to put pen to paper. These are the major elements that we have as it develops. We're going to have more comments and more specific information, so I'm comfortable authorizing you to, and substantially the form or however we want to do it. And then if there's additional comments to clean it up, that's fine.
What I thought we wanted to do is say, we support it. We want to protect our water, we're concerned about the traffic. And then in the close, it was, we also want to protect our residents. Just set the table.
Right, there are other issues with traffic and truck traffic, and all those things will come out as time comes. So we'll figure that out as, as the project develops. It's too many possibilities right now.
Well, I thought I was going to write a book, that's why I stopped. That isn't what we're trying to do right now.
It's fine.
But, okay.
Generally fine.
And we'll get it back out. And we'll have everybody get a chance. So when, on Thursday, does it have to win this last week? By the end of?
End of the day.
So four o'clock-ish?
Yep.
Okay, so we'll just make sure we get it out by that time. Okay. All right, thank you. So we're at the 14, not right, because I did 13. Item 14 is to review an act to designate the police chief the authority to assign specific police officers to polling places pursuant to the Votes Act. This is similar to the last election. So we just have a motion to that effect?
Yes, I move approval.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, so voted. Item 15 is to review an act to sign the warrant for the 2022 state election.
Oh, I move approval. We had a question.
Oh, yes.
Did we need to vote on item 12? That's what we're talking about over here. That's our sidebar.
Oh. I suppose we do.
Authorize the chair to.
Authorize the chair.
The letter.
Sure. Do we make a motion to that?
So can we go back?
Sure.
Okay, good call. I move that we authorize the chair to submit comments on the environmental notification form for the proposed GFI development property located at 160 Holden Street and 274 to 378 Holden Street.
Second.
Okay, motion, second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so voted. Okay, now review an act to sign the warrant of the 2022 state election.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, motion, second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so voted. Item 16 is to review an act on the one-day all alcohol license application to Mary's Syrian Orthodox Church, one industrial drive, Shrewsbury, for a wedding on October 22nd, 2022, 7:00 PM to 12:00 AM.
So moved.
Second.
Motion, second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so voted. Item 17. It's simple, but the explanation is complicated. The, the, the procedure we've been following for the past 15 years is when somebody applies for a license that requires a special permit of the variance, the applicant comes to the board first, and the board, if it decides to approve it, votes it subject to the ZBA granting the permit, because we had a problem one time when the office had happened. Because of the administrative error, and we couldn't have this hearing tonight, it flip-flops the schedule. Where our next meeting, ZBA meets on Monday, we meet on Tuesday. If we, if we, so that, so, so what we, what we're going to, if the board agrees, we ask the ZBA if they would agree that they could have the hearing on Monday. But they make, if they vote in the affirmative, they make a conditional on us making the affirmative vote on Tuesday. If they don't, if they don't want to do it that way, then we're asking them to stay with the procedure we followed, but that would delay the applicant through no fault of their own until a month later when the ZBA meets again. So neither, neither board's committing that we're going to, we're going to vote in the affirmative. We're just saying if we do, it's going to be a conditional vote. Okay?
I think that's the best way to handle it, considering it's a clerical error and we don't want to hold up.
Yeah, it wasn't their fault. So, and so could, could have a motion to allow the chair to send out that letter to the zoning board of appeals?
Move approval.
Second.
Okay, motion, second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so voted. Okay, all right, so Mr. Mizikah, we are going to need executive session?
Yes.
Okay, so we'll skip that for now. We'll move on to correspondence. Item 19 is an email dated September 25th, George Cluse, 33, I mean, George Smith, 32, 33 Cluse Street, regarding Community Animal Hospital letting dogs out early, so noted. Item 20 is a letter received September 26th from Gregory Casto Gianani regarding the election. He's the Election Officer, Executive Director of the Shrewsbury Retirement Board, regarding the election of Mary Thompson to the Shrewsbury Contributory Retirement Board. And congratulations, Mary. Item 21 is an email dated October 3rd from Beth McCollum, Executive Assistant to the Superintendent Shrewsbury Public Schools, regarding a letter to the Assabit Valley Regional Technical High School, the school committee, in which the chair of this board and the school committee sent a letter asking if we could have a dialogue with them about the possibility of becoming part of the, of the Assabit Valley Collaborative so that we could participate in the vocational programs there. Item 22 is a letter dated October 4th from Andrew Truman, the town engineer, regarding the Toblin Bridge rebuilding, delayed start. The project's approved, the contract is signed, with some design work and delays in the supply chain. It was decided that they didn't want to start the work that needed to be done on the bridge abutments in the middle of the winter, so it's better to wait until spring. So that was what staff and men decided to do, and I believe the neighbors were notified, correct? Item 23 is an email dated October 4th from Deborah Wagner, Director of Accounts, Massachusetts Department of Revenue, regarding a notification of free cash for Shrewsbury. The amount that was certified as free cash was nine, $9,198,615. Mr. Mizikah, do you have anything you want to add to that? I know there were other accounts, but.
Yeah, no, we expected this number. We've talked about how revenues are outpaced the budget estimates as we budgeted for these in January of 2020 timeframe and the throes of the pandemic. Excuse me, January 2021. And also, we turned more dollars back than we anticipated because of the length of time that it takes to recruit new employees, especially within some of our large department in public safety. So as a percentage basis, it's about 1% higher as a percentage of the annual operating budget than the prior year, so kind of well within the margin. We have a financial policy that indicates that we should create between 3% and 5% of free cash on an annual basis. And this is just slightly higher than 6% and gives us an opportunity to increase our stabilization fund a little more than we were anticipating once we get back to the, you know, town meeting in the spring. So no surprises, in short.
Okay, thank you. Any question? Item 24 is a letter received from, on October 6th, from Keith, um, City Animal Control Officer, regarding the quarterly warrant return to the board regarding the activities for the past quarter. Okay. Before I ask for a motion to go into executive session, is there any other thing else to come before the board tonight? An open session? Okay, there being none, I'd ask for a motion to go into executive session?
Mr. Chairman, I move that the board vote to enter into executive session pursuant to general law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A 6, for the purposes listed on the agenda.
Okay, and I guess I should have said before that, that's for a 10-chase terrace formerly a portion of 12-chase terrace. Okay, you have a second, I'm sorry?
We have a second.
Okay. Mr. Pekaya's a roll call vote. Ms. Cassin?
Aye.
Ms. Flynn?
Aye.
Ms. Flynn? I mean, Ms. Conlon?
Aye.
Really, I need sleep. And Mr. Samia?
Aye.
Mr. Paul?
Aye.
Okay. The board will now convene into executive session pursuant to GLC 30A, Section 21A 6, to consider the purchase, exchange, or lease of value of real property. Furthermore, the board will not reconvene back into open session.